Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our commission meeting. We're going to stand for the pledge of allegiance. And Carl, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I hope everyone's staying warm out there. It's been an interesting event with the weather we've been having. So Eddie, you want to come on up?
I'm doing.
He's so cool. He plows my driveway. Been happening for ten years. When he first got it, he plowed my driveway when I was brand new neighbor and I was so happy because I wouldn't have been able to get out of my garage. I was still working for Carl back then.
This particular one, there was a tax ticket that said Edward Forheather was in there and these were supplemental tickets. So they didn't, somehow they didn't see it and they made another one to sell it. So we're not losing money on it because it's supplemental, it's a head-on ticket anyway. So we're just canceling them.
Well, it was already paid one time.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't need to pay.
Yeah. And they made another one.
I had that with the nuclear rate at one time, about double pay. It took forever.
Okay, I move that we approve the exonerations.
Second.
Got a motion is properly moved in second. All those in favor?
That's why we're signing it. If you guys could have a look at our partner. It needs sticks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's not, I mean, it's been water like the wine.
It's coming and we actually have a study that has, that addresses the water and stuff, so we're probably going to deal with that also. So it's coming. We finally have the money to do it.
Hey Ruth, since Eddie's here, can we talk to number nine on your exhibit list? Let's go ahead and do that. That way he won't have to come back over the code.
It's your vehicle purchase, Eddie.
Okay. Okay, so what do you want to tell us about?
The vehicle purchase, one of my employees had a blowout and when he did, he lost control of the vehicle and he went over the creek. Delivered down to Brian's Park there and vehicles totaled. So we did replace the vehicle. I put bids out to five or six bids viewers. And as we signed on a Toyota, I don't, we've got seven vehicles and I don't like to load up on one brand or type of vehicle, you know, because if you start having engine issues with that brand, you've got five vehicles to all of them go bad at the same time. So we try to, we try to keep our mix of different vehicles. So we went with the Toyota. They were all priced within a thousand dollars each other. So we were going to take money that we got from the insurance, we put in twelve thousand dollars. Yeah, and then I was going to pay the difference. I have money set aside to PUC for the year.
Okay, that's Toyota four runner?
No, it's a RAV4.
RAV4 Toyota RAV4.
We do the small ones. We have that four runner.
Interior does a four runner, I'll say.
Okay, we have, we have a motion on the floor. Do a second. Have a motion properly moved in second. All those in favor?
So we will, we can purchase a four runner, but the fallout from that, would you answer all the questions?
No.
It's already been moved second in the past.
It's already done. It's already done.
Great, thank you.
But they are superior. Oh, so we want to welcome Senator Brian Hilton to the meeting. He just got sworn in last week. Very excited to have somebody from Fayette County serving in the Senate. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. That's great to be here.
That's pretty cool. Okay, the payroll. One twenty-four, twenty-five. I'll make a motion to approve. Got a motion in second. All those in favor? Next, vouchers and invoices.
So I have a couple of things to say. One is last week I had misread one of our reimbursement requests and I, I thought that Armstrong Creek had submitted for reimbursement for food and, and a couple of other things. I think maybe Sam's receipt or something and I had misread the voucher and they had not submitted for reimbursement from the fire levy for that. They had paid for it out of another fund. And I have educated myself through GIA on how to recognize which things have been, because they submit all their receipts together, which things are actually for levy reimbursement and which ones were marked for another account. So I want to note that Armstrong did not submit something inappropriately and I had misread that receipt, so. But also we had another issue from last meeting, the Smithers Fire Department HVAC. I believe John got a call from the mayor about this. They did need their HVAC fixed. So I do think we ought to go ahead and pay for it, but I do want to suggest that we send a letter that Smithers is new to running its fire department and let them know that extraordinary expenses like this need to be approved through the commission. I mean, we can have an emergency meeting if we have to, but we can't have individual fire departments just spending fifteen thousand dollars at a time without coming through us first. So my motion is to, and I had no other concerns about vouchers and invoices this, this week. So I'm going to move we approve vouchers and invoices, including last week's HVAC for Smithers Fire Department and send a letter to fire department.
A second.
Here we have a motion properly moved in second. All those in favor? Minutes, you want to tackle that one?
Yep, move that we approve the minutes for one eight. Amy has made the edits after I reviewed them yesterday.
Second. All right, we have a motion properly moved in second. All those in favor? Next state settlement.
Move that we approve the state settlements.
Second.
Motion properly moved in second. All those in favor?
Carl Harris is here for him.
All right.
Trouble.
Carl, you want to come on up?
He said, that's what my grandkids call it. I don't know how that started. My staff always thought it was a project.
I was aware of his staff at one time, for the record.
I, I was the executor for the estate of Barry Galair who died. When my age, probably. He died in two thousand and two or three, I believe. Anyway, we probated her estate and sold all of her property. We kept the estate open because there was one thing hanging and that was to sell her real estate. She left a life estate to a Becky Snyder and after a period of time, Jamie Bankship, who was in commissioner council at the time, he and I decided we would close the estate so that we wouldn't have to keep paying a bond every year because it was reducing what money would go to what she wanted, which was a scholarship fund for nursing students to West Virginia Tech or to WVU, depending on what it was. So that estate was closed, I think filed it in March of two thousand and ten. It was approved March fifth of two thousand. And Becky died in December, so I'm asking to reopen the estate so that I could sell the real estate down there scholarship fund. I also ask that I not be required to post an additional bond now. I'm covered by malpractice insurance for up to a million dollars and I don't think that property is even going to come close to that because where it's located, it's in Canola Falls. And because of the bridge closure, the property over there is not worth what it was at one time, certainly not worth what it was when she passed away. But we are going to make every effort to sell it. I have a, under the will, and I wrote the will, I rewarded myself to have an appraiser done, appraisal done of the property to determine what its value was and to sell it for that, that value report. So I have an appraiser coming tomorrow to look at the property, kind of estimate the value of it then, and then I'll turn it over to a realtor to see if we can sell.
Any comments, Anthony? Seems pretty straightforward to me.
I think so. I'm comfortable with Mr. Harris's proposal.
I am too. I'm moving that we approve it and that we do not require additional bond.
Second. We have a motion probably moved in second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
All of her, all of Becky's property is not out of there again. Her sister's working on her estate as opposed to whether or not. We just have to get there. Tremendous property. You know, that was a tremendous property. A house of a ton of this. Been fighting on that one.
Okay, Bruce?
The first item, Lindsay Drawl, and for reaching board. I have to print something for you this time. If that's the one.
Yeah, Leslie. Leslie, you there?
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. All right, so let's go through this drawdown.
So it's resolution number eleven. This is for the Armstrong Public Service District approving invoices related to the construction of their services for the water tank, the Palton Water Tank Replacement. This is the project for which the commission received a community development block grant. And this is a pay application for the contractor CJ Hughes, Hughes, I'm sorry, in the amount of two hundred seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. We do understand that this work is complete. We have not yet received the contractor's final pay app. So we expect that there will be at least one and maybe two more draws in the future, but we are getting this project wrapped up. Now that the construction is complete, we'll finish the administrative paperwork. The community development block grant program will come in and monitor and allow us to close it out. And we will present paperwork to the commission for the closeout.
Okay, so it looks like we're going to finish a little bit ahead of what we thought earlier.
Well, we're estimating mid-April by the time we finish with the draw requests. Do the final performance report and bring it before the commission for approval. Then a monitor will come out and review all the files to make sure that all the programmatic and financial guidelines of the program were followed. Once they do that, they will issue us a closeout letter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the drawdown request. Got a properly moved in second motion. All in favor? You got that one to sign.
I'll go ahead and talk about the calendar since I'm the one. We had approved our calendar for the year through April. And I wanted to get with Ruth because it's really difficult when we have a Wednesday meeting and a holiday on a Monday or a holiday on a Thursday or something like that. So there were a couple of meetings in there and it's hard for Ruth and Gia when we have meetings payroll week. So what we did was we, closing week. So we had, we had a compromise. And my proposal in the very sophisticated form, we submitted you with my exes over the days is that we eliminate, we can always, and a reminder, we can always have special meetings when we need to, but that we eliminate the May twenty-eighth meeting, which is right after Memorial Day. There's a lot of times we have staff who aren't here also. And the other one was in November, which the day before Thanksgiving, that we eliminate that meeting, but otherwise approve the schedule as presented. So the November twenty-sixth meeting and May twenty-eighth meetings, I recommend we strike those, we need to reschedule. We'll be meeting three times in October, so I think if we can't take care of it during the three meetings in October and the meeting in December or November, then shame on us. But, so my motion is to approve the calendar. It was striking those two dates.
I'll second that motion.
Here we have a motion properly moved in second. All those in favor?
The next is, you do guys make the thinking a matter of minutes to approve publishing and RFP. This is for the state development grant, the memorial building front porch.
I move that we approve that published.
I second that motion.
Okay, have a motion properly moved in second. All those in favor?
And then same thing for the next one is approving publishing an RFP for the state development grant, the courthouse tile project to replace all the burdened hours.
Oh, that's a state development. It should be courthouse facilities improvement. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, well, I move that we improve that publication also.
Second.
Okay, have another motion probably moved in second. All those in favor?
Next thing is a budget revision. The bulk of the budget revision is tied to grants. Specifically the one Leslie Taylor was just talking about and then per term of town tax and of course the sheriff's department for others, all their special levy reimbursements. Nothing out of ordinary. Most of it's grand.
I move that we approve the budget revision.
Second. We have properly moved in seconds. All those in favor?
Well, GST.
Yep.
So GST, thanks to Anthony's letter, has agreed to refund the money we spent on the website design, which was my concern, that we had paid for a service we didn't receive and I didn't want to renew their contract until we got that resolved and it has been resolved in our favor. Thank you, Anthony. So I move that we approve the GST contract.
Second.
And motion properly moved in second. All those in favor?
All right, you have great grant criteria.
Are you up here?
Up here. So as you know, last time we got the money, we had a short period of time to spend it, so we did strictly voluntary agreement that they signed up. But we had some discussion on how are we going to, if we get a bunch of applications, how are we going to choose who gets the money, who doesn't get the money? So I had emailed Ruth, criteria, I just said it real quickly. So I think there should be some kind of criteria added to that about whether it's a residential or commercial property.
Right.
But I think the rest of the criteria wasn't good.
Maybe do us an extra point or two for commercials.
That's my opinion. I mean, or just rate commercial properties against each other or something. I mean, but I mean, this is more for people who can't afford to.
That is the main goal. So we, Amy and I sat in a, a training, oh, this is federal money. So of course it's very strict. So I mean, the goal of the federal ARPA money is not to help businesses and I think they don't have definitions, but basically one of the things that they also recommended is putting some type of incumbents on it, maybe saying that, you know, if we tear down your property, you can't sell it for a while or you may need, maintain it. So I didn't know if the commission wanted to do anything like that. It's not required. They basically said.
I like that. Well, I don't know about selling that. I'm not, I don't like to try to restrict people's ability to sell their land, but, but as far as
they were just very clear that people can't make money off of the ARPA money because it's ARPA money.
Now, now we're.
Yeah, the funding we got, yeah.
They just stay with ARPA for Pete's sake. Okay.
The money that came from the.
We need more afternoon.
Yeah, so they basically, you know, they said they're not lawyers, but it does help if we put some, and I think the reason why is so someone that has, like you said, a commercial piece of property, they get grant money carried down and they turn around with the intention of already making money.
Trying to develop.
Yeah.
But we want them to develop the property.
Right, but that is up to the commission to just set some type of standard, whatever.
How do we define making money?
That was my question.
There is no definition.
Correct.
Because if I have property with a dilapidated structure on it and it's worth twenty thousand and it's going to cost me ten to demo and dispose of the building. And it's paid for with grant money, that in theory is.
Making money.
And we did ask for any type of, and they basically said they're not lawyers. It's just prevent from wasting the funds. That's all their answer to us was.
So that was my question. When, when you went through this training, did they say that there were criteria we had to meet and had to do this or did they leave it?
Suggestion. It was all suggestion. Yeah, so they just were giving us like other counties say you have to maintain your property, have to keep the grass cut.
It's recommended.
Yeah.
Not shallow.
It's just protecting the ARPA funding.
Correct.
When do we have access to that money?
So we can use it now. I mean, we, yeah, so we have ten, just so you know, we did ten that are in the paper. There'll be a bid opening in February. Anthony will do his paperwork. He does have a list. We have gotten probably ten or fifteen applications, but I'm going to send out the notices with the new properties that we've occasioned for, so.
And how long do we have?
We have to have it spent by December first. Of this year.
I suppose what the commission would have to consider is if you continually do what they don't recommend, you may see your funding decreased. Would that, would they have led you believe that?
I don't know if it's with ARPA funding. Like I said, they didn't tell us, but it is.
Because it's applied for every year. It's applied for every year, correct?
But if it's with ARPA funds, that stuff is, it's going away. But I would also say that the ARPA money, there's a look back period and if you get audited and they say you shouldn't have done that, you have to pay back.
There's, everything shiny has a hook.
Right, so I mean, there's nothing black and white, but I think that, you know, this time we should at least, when someone applies to me, I can't say, yeah, we're going to take it down or not. But if I have criteria on telling them, we'll take it down if you, you know, are able to meet this and, but I don't know what you guys want as far as any kind of hold, whether they need to maintain their property after we tear it down. You know, that would be a big concern because.
After your training, you're saying that the commission sets the criteria and not.
Correct. Every county does something different. Every city does something different. I'm fine with the maintaining the property one. I don't want to put any restrictions on sale of that. I mean, I.
So Anthony, would that be something that you could just add to when they do the voluntary demolition?
Add what?
So after we approve it, you do that voluntary demolition. So is that something you could just add to that?
To the agreement that, that they have to maintain their property.
Okay. In terms of the.
Containing is arbitrary.
Also, people who received the grant this past year should not be able to receive a grant this year.
I think that was, was that your, in your criteria or?
No, I did not have that. I mean, I can always, you know, we can put them at the bottom of the list and maybe if there's money leftovers or, I mean, if you guys are going to leave that up to me. Right now, we have nobody that applied last time that applied this time. So I mean, we may get to the end of it, so.
Well, she did have a provision in there that more than two.
If they own.
More than.
And that they just, you know, as far as points, not everybody's going to have all five points, but when it comes to the most, I mean, there are people that own twenty or thirty properties.
The people that I see benefiting from this are the ones who maybe inherit their family home or something and it's dilapidated, they can't afford to tear it down sort of thing. Not Shiloh Trailer Park, so they can then build something cooler there. I mean, you know, those, to me, this is.
On that, I know we did get a request. Do we want to make anything? I mean.
I think we need to make a decision on that here. I don't know if we should do it without the property owner present if, since he submitted it.
I don't think so. I don't think we should make a decision.
I just know that that is one.
When he's, when, when he's here, will.
And I don't think the, the, the sufficiently specific to bring that up.
I agree. Yeah, I agree.
So on that, as I get the applications, I'll just fill out this criteria and the higher point ones go first and then I'll go. If that's okay, want to make it. But we do have people applying and I don't want to say, yeah, you'll get a grant money. It also depends on.
Have we reviewed her point system? Can we, can we make the decision on the point on that until next meeting? So Anthony can take a look at it. I'd like him to just make sure he doesn't have any concerns or if we don't, if we needed to find something better or whatever. I want it very clear to the public to understand what our reasoning is. We might have to put some definitions in.
Yeah, yeah, because I can still take applications for consent because that's all, that's just giving us access to.
Right, and by the time, I mean, we'll meet again two weeks. So we'll, we'll actually, we'll be meeting every three days here shortly, so.
Well, the other, the other issue is what we ran into last year is we had several people signed up, who signed consents and then when the ownership was investigated, we figured out that they didn't actually own the property. We got that come up a couple of times. I'll have, we'll have time. I mean, that's going to have, the property ownership will have to be better. So that'll take, that'll take some time.
I think the more we have in a policy, the better. So.
Did you send that to?
I sent it to, I'll give you, I'm not sure. So he didn't, okay, that's. But I'll send you a digital copy as well.
Okay, okay, so I move that we postpone that decision until our meeting on the, is it the thirty-first?
Are we going to demo buildings within municipalities?
I, I think that's part of the criteria she has on there. So I mean, I think, I think that's possible. It's just a matter of discretion.
Just on a side note, last time Anthony drew up like a agreement. So we do have agreements with Mount Hope and Holly Bridge that we would assist in this. We do have those agreements in place for a few municipalities, but it is part of our ranking that, that is appropriate in the county and outside, so that kind of helped us to take care of it.
Is Oak Hill had this grant last year?
They did have the grant and I think they have turned some of their money in, but I've not had any, I haven't requested so far for someone who lives in Minden, but.
Did they get a grant again this year or you know?
They did not apply. Because they had turned the money in, so why would you apply again?
Second, we have a motion properly moved in second. All those in favor?
So while Angela's here, do you want to go ahead and do the beatification committee?
So our beautification, I know when we did the boards, they had expired, so we do need to re-apply all those members. I have two members that have reached out that have not gotten back to me. That's Kevin Willis and Randy Cains. I don't know if they want to serve again. I've just, I've not got an email or text from them, so.
Okay, who are the members that?
So the current members, you have Dan Duke would be a new member since he would be replacing. He serves as code official. And then you will have, Shanice Step serves as fire chief. And then you have Dan Hilton serves as, as the litter control officer. And then you will have Aaron Adams is going to serve as the health official. He's a new employee of the health. And then the other two would be Randy Cains and Kevin Willis. So I don't know if you want to wait on those until I can get a response on one or the others.
You've, you've heard from everyone except both.
Those two, yeah, everybody else said they would serve and they have filled out applications, I believe. I don't know whether, but those four.
So I'm going to move that we approve the four. We've filled out applications.
Yeah, and I'll let you know when I hear from you.
And postpone the other two to January thirty-first.
Second. Have a motion properly moved in second. All in favor?
Second, have a motion properly moved in second. All in favor?
Okay, the next is a letter of intent for volunteer West Virginia day of service grant. That is. Jack and Brian. I need to talk about that.
Right, so uh the reason I'm in front of you is because Volunteer West Virginia. Reached out to state E and D uh with funds that they wanted to put towards a. Uh nine eleven themed day of service and if he pushed that out to the counties, so. Came across my desk and it seems like a natural fit for what Brian is doing in Park with the Trail Building. So uh that is one of the allowable uh projects that they brought up and we're already doing it. Uh, what this would serve as is a reimbursement of up to fifteen thousand dollars for uh trail proof things.
It's a it's a great truth, like with our Fayette Fayette Trail Coalition that you guys approved last year and we bought. We did ten grand in tools and parts and pieces and they're actually doing another workday this weekend coming up, even the weather, that's just what they do. This group here, you have to manage the volunteer group. That's how you you're one of the criterias to get the funding. They already have the volunteer group. They're already doing it. So once they're done with this project or stuff like that, they're gonna be coming back and asking for like as a park, we're gonna be asking you for signage for things like that. I think this would be a great way to. Get the volunteers working and this would be a great fun to pull for signage or a small bridge or possibly diesel fuel or something like that if needed, but we're not gonna have to pull from this. And if we do, it'd be reimbursement money. I think it's a great way and we we all know like a simple trail sign is a thousand dollars now. You know, if you have proper signage and things like that. Thinking about local sourcing like through Shell or those guys like that would make those awesome metal signs that you see around the trails. This should be a great thing to fall back on. Instead of me coming to ask for that money, we can get reimbursed for certain costs like that.
Well, keep in mind too, um if this comes through, that the Boy Scouts have volunteered to help with trails.
Absolutely.
I mean, they've been doing a lot of national park trails, but they've been trying to focus more. I think they've worked with the Trail Coalition recently.
Yeah, Steve's actually on the group. One of the Boy Scout leader guys, he he brings his group down. I think they're all kinda in the mean with that.
I have history of studying Boy Scouts work, so not a problem there.
Child labor, you're cool with it.
One of the things is you have to have fifty plus volunteers. We're already there and uh what we would like to do and some of the. Visioning for this is we'd like to have something to uh celebrate, well, celebrate, commemorate. Uh nine eleven in the county annually. Uh Raleigh County has the piece of steel. And the Flint Towers, uh they do their parade and things like that. I'd we'd like to do something like that that we can come back to every year. And you know, it can change the morphis we go forward. It's kind of a kinda stuff that we're already doing and what we would eventually do is dedicate. Uh either a section or a whole trail, depending on what uh what we flesh out of this uh as a. Uh nine one one uh remembrance trip or never forget, you know, something to that effect. And what we'd like is just permission to uh send a letter and tell.
I'm cool. Then I mean that we approve it.
Well, uh uh you said you have fifty volunteers, uh more than fifty volunteers. Where where besides the Boy Scouts, where are the volunteers coming from?
Uh Trail Coalition has.
They trail group has. They have quite a vast group that they're pulling from. They they posted out and then the people show up.
Another thing that plays into our hands for this is uh if approved, uh we can use. Uh labor from April first until uh nine eleven. So we're thinking what we'll do is do uh a few different uh iterations of service during the year. And then maybe have celebrations at the park for nine eleven or that weekend following. Nine eleven followed on Thursday this year.
So I I have one other question and we have two representatives, fire departments there since nine eleven's involved. Would our fire departments be. Interested in participating? I mean, you don't have to answer yet, but uh I think that would be appropriate. I think we'd be negligent not to ask you.
And also like to reach out to the high schools and. Anyone and everyone is welcome to join us for this.
I have no other question.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I'll uh give a second. Have properly moved in second. All those in favor?
Thanks, guys.
Nice initiative.
All right, the next is the good decision for the tagers and body cams. You had asked that y'all have more time to look over it.
I also asked you to give us the additional good news.
Oh, yeah, the um it's right here. We got another distribution for the opioid, from the opioid fund. It's three hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars.
In addition to their thirty thousand we just got, and we still have seven hundred and fifty and around seven hundred and fifty in the account. So that's what. That's what I think should fund this particular request.
Counselor, is there any issue with doing that?
Opioid, this is their settlement money.
I think it's reasonably connected to what we're limited in terms of how we spend it. I mean, it's.
It's an approved.
Yeah, it's going directly to. And it's, as we've already discussed, we really, really.
Really need it.
Yeah, we need these things.
Oh, is that your motion?
Well, before we go, Senator Heldon, you you're involved in in things like this. Do you have any comments on that?
No, I think that's a great use of first first of all, because you know, the opioid settlement money across the whole states. Was intended to mitigate the economic and otherwise loss of in our community. Just that you you wanna keep this short or give you.
The background, you're the head of the committee now.
You've worked on that. I understand your work.
These guys still carrying narking hikes around all over the place, big double nation ones. So we're all, we're all impacted. All of us have to. We're all family members and. People in our community that have been impacted by this in numbers of ways. And so this settlement money, West Virginia received about a billion dollars. Overall, and after a couple hundred hundred million dollars of attorney's fees. Seventy percent of the money of the whatever's left over after the billion was for attorney's fees. Seventy percent of that went to the West Virginia First Foundation. Which is approved that operates outside the legislature. Uh and they are, it was designed that way so they could move quickly and also if they chose to could work with faith-based organizations and that type of thing. And there was eleven board members across the state. Five were appointed by the uh five were appointed by the governor. And six of the board members were elected by officials throughout the state. You guys probably so many voted on that, but. And then the other thirty percent got distributed out to the mississalities and counties to use uh. For whatever purposes they need such as this and the money was distributed on a factor basis of population. And then also how many opioids were put into the area during that period of time that the class and that's what I should have covered. And so, you know, you got uh, you know, you can have a situation where a county like Wyoming County, even though it's smaller in population. Could have maybe got a little bit more money than another counties because uh in, you know, they were hit harder about it. Like in Oceana. Little tiny town in Wyoming County, they had two uh two major drug stores and right now they have two spots and. A treatment center there inside their city. So anyhow, all those factors play into it. So. Uh it's, you know, there's a memorandum of understanding that the First Foundation follows on the website. It's uh that that's something maybe you can employ. I've also uh talked to counties who have uh, you know, got a process like where they each counts, each commissioner. Uh picks a representative and so you have like a little select committee that spends time focusing. Like in Raleigh County, they're gonna have three people that focus exclusively on the opioid issue to. Look at the various options within the county from law enforcement to uh recovery programs, treatment programs. And that 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 three person select committee, they don't make the decision, but they spend the time vetting all the uh. And do the study and come back to the commissioners and say, here's how we think, here's some options we think we can utilize this money uh throughout our county.
We have put a group like that together. We had a workshop on it. And Terry Harland from the Health Department is leading a group and advisory group. That is gonna make recommendations. Now, we had already had this. Um, we have committed two hundred, was it two hundred and fifty? Thousand, around two hundred and fifty thousand to our um. Family Resource Network programming, um the ICE Initiative, ICE Collaborative. We have Fayette County has the only ICE. Collaborate Iceland collaborative program in in the state. And it's very successful. It's been in place for five years and it hadn't received additional funding yet to perpetuate it. So we funded an additional year with the opioid funds and everybody was here for that and and approved of that investment. And and we had uh long had in mind to upgrade the equipment of our law enforcement. So that was something we wanted to do. Outside of the working group, but the rest of the money that's sitting there and any money we get, we're gonna be looking to them just kinda like we do our park board for recommendations about how we. You know, spend whatever money we have allocated towards something.
I think it's fantastic and I I like to meet with them. So West Virginia, first time ever our legislative body formed uh in our senate formed a uh new committee. That specifically focuses on substance abuse and mental illness. And uh you know, we never had it before, even though. We're fiftieth when it comes to overdoses, you know, the bad side, we're we're the worst in the nation and Southern West Virginia is three times the national average. So. I think it's a good committee. Fortunately, I I'm able to be the chairman of that. So we're gonna have a good representation, I think, in Southern West Virginia. And I think that's really somebody from Southern West Virginia really needs a chair, to be quite honest, because. We're like the uh epicenter for for the opioid crisis. So. I'd love to meet with them and talk to them. They're gonna be working on initiatives at the state level that I think we can do co-op with the counties and. Even some of the cities to bring uh to bring some state money in. So if we if we find an initiative that we agree on and we wanna work together on, I think there's an opportunity for us to uh bring some money into it and. The good thing I think about where our legislative body is with it now, I think there's a propensity right now to. Let's try some things that are different because what we're doing right now is not working. Now, we we're in our third and fourth generation now of this crisis and it's not getting better, by the way, despite. You may hear some numbers, well, there's less overdoses and these guys can tell you a lot of us because we're we're saving people right on the sidewalks and streets, you know. And so that's not necessarily to me improving. It's also, there's some measurements of abstinence that I think aren't completely accurate. So. I I think there's some good ways we can work together to uh, you know, potentially really leverage the funds you have. With the First Foundation and also potentially some legislative money, so.
Well, that's good. The First Foundation did fund our Family Resource Network this last round, which was.
I saw that.
Awesome cuz they do teen court, they do a lot of other things that are. Programming that that we really appreciate here. But I'm glad you're on this. Finally see progress.
Well, and getting that money is a big deal, so they need to be applauded because that that's that money was just like a first. Get the money out the door. So that shows that that group is proactive. They got out in front of, they did their application right. Because you can imagine, there's a bunch of people who went after that money and they had a, so they had to be pretty tight on like, is the application done properly? Any, I can tell you just from talking to the First Foundation, this first method, and they're not gonna do it like the same kind of that first method. That if somebody made one mistake on the application, you got kicked out. They're like, I, we're not gonna accept them. So whoever did that did a great job of of getting it to the front of the line and getting that money. And so you need to give them a big pat on the back for that.
Well, Senator Heldon, I think I can speak for the commission. We appreciate your work on this and I I spoke with you in Charleston last week about briefly on this and I understood your passion. And I we we appreciate your your dedication.
Well, thank you. And honestly, when I started running for office, it really was like, I'll just be honest, it wasn't my passion. Like that's something like I ran for the West Virginia senate initially, but as I went throughout our region and I started seeing devastation. And you know, we all have uh, we all want economic growth in our areas and but we have to have the workforce. And right now it's hard from an economic development standpoint to feel good about telling the company, hey, you gotta come to our area, we could get you five hundred employees. Now, if we were sober and we had people out there producing, I think we could do it at some point. So. I I think it's the number one thing for Southern West Virginia for us to get our economy back. But more importantly, just to help repair some of these broken families and lives we have across our area. I guess. It's all of us, all of us are affected. I mean, I'm sure you guys think, Saman, you're like, you're worried about right now. Or I know I do. You know, I've got people in my life, so. We can all work this together. I think we made a huge difference in Southern West Virginia.
Thank you, Senator.
I'm off my soapbox now.
All right, it's all right.
I have a work time politician, so don't ever give me a chance to talk.
Yeah, Greg and Brian will keep you talking all day.
What was the amount? We haven't voted yet. Just remind us of the amount so we can get it on the record. Because it was adjusted since the last time we discussed it. And the reason it was adjusted, it was to add an additional capability that we needed that would activate the. Uh body cams as the officers exit the vehicle, which has been an issue. Um, so the full amount is two hundred nine thousand, three hundred ninety two dollars and sixty five cents. I move that we approve it out of the opioid settlement funding.
I second.
Have a motion properly moved in second. All those in favor?
Okay, you wanna go and speak to the policy letter for the fire level? Um, okay, so. What we're gonna do or what I'm proposing we do is uh send a letter to the to fire chiefs and send a copy of the current draft. Um reimbursement policy. And request written comment uh by the end of February. And also budget projections by the end of February um for us to make a decision by March nineteenth on all of the above. And so this is just the letter stating what I just said. So um so I move that we approve. The letter that you guys haven't, they haven't seen the letter, though. They need to see it. Let me just, I'll just read it to you. It's like literally like two or three sentences. Uh what I said to Ruth.
Count the sentences.
Uh, no, you can't count the sentence. It was short for one of my letters.
Chief Vernon? Will that give you in time to get your numbers to the town for them to do their?
That's right. Do you have that?
Yeah, the town's budget is is separate from what the.
So it basically says that we intend to implement a fire levy reimbursement policy policy to streamline the reimbursement process. Um requires fire chiefs, we it requests fire chiefs review the attached policy draft. And provide written comments to the commission along with their department's FY twenty five budget, no later than uh February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Commission will make decisions about the policy of budgets at its meeting on March nineteenth, twenty twenty five. For reference, please see the attached spreadsheet. We're gonna attach a spreadsheet that we have with some previous year's budgets that we got from former fire coordinator file. And um and I noted that the commission is aware of the auditor's open check with program is not currently operational. Uh therefore, participation in it will not be a requirement until it is. So that's the that's the letter. So I'm gonna move that we approve the letter. As presented.
Before we move, before we make a motion, anything you guys would like to add?
Uh, I just wanna make sure that anything in the policy would not affect the formation of the budget. I don't think it would based on what's already out there.
It shouldn't.
I think I think.
I don't understand the concern.
Well, I think Ms. Taylor built that in with you. If you have a concern with something, when when you respond, you can put that concern and then we'll evaluate your concerns. But I was just asking up, is there anything that?
Uh, that's the process.
Process, fine. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I second the motion.
Motion properly moves in second. All those in favor? Okay. Um, next, I'm gonna move that we go into executive session to discuss critical utility infrastructure. Uh, reason for the executive session is to get legal advice from our attorneys.
Uh, reason for the executive session is to get legal advice from our attorneys. Okay, we're uh, coming back from executive session where we met with our attorneys and no decisions were made. Commissioner Taven?
Okay, um, so based on the legal advice that we received, there's a hearing, um. In Montgomery on January thirtieth, at what time, John?
Ten o'clock.
At ten o'clock, um, with regard to some of our public service districts and the Public Service Commission. Uh, it's a public hearing and, um, we discussed in part. What actions or what our lawyers recommend that we uh, do at that hearing. So based on those recommendations, I'm gonna move that we have our lawyers file a motion on our behalf. To continue the hearing for sixty days to give us the opportunity to uh, solicit some input for some of the people affected. By uh, the hearing and the decisions that we may be requested to make.
I second the motion. Okay, we have a motion in the second on the floor. All those in favor?
And now I'm gonna adjourn.
Second.